And may this wish over to university. Such as the professor now.
Oh, graduation.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay.
And here are mayor and city council. And as I mentioned, every August they get together and they put together a vision and mission statement. So this is the vision statement that they adopted in August of 2016. Now, one of the major changes they made to the vision statement this year is they added the word equitable. So they put equitable community. They want it to be fair for everybody.
Why 2031? Or thinking?
Okay, so, well, I don't know exactly why it's 2031. But generally, we work off of a 20-year plan. And so we're going right now through the process of adopting our next 20-year comprehensive plan, which the council will adopt in August. And that will replace the plan that was adopted in 1995. Can exactly answer the question about how we came up with 2031?
Well, the consultant that we use.
Fifteen years out.
Yeah, he does like 15 years out. So like next year when they do it, they'll say Dubuque Vision 2032. So it's just.
That's just the consultant what he uses. These are the five-year goals that I mentioned to you the council establishes. So this is all built around these. This section is built around sustainability, economic prosperity, social cultural vibrancy, and environmental integrity. And then here's planned and managed growth, partnering for a better Dubuque and improved connectivity. So those are our five-year goals. These are the principles of sustainability, and then these three items. I'll give you a little historical perspective. So I found a document from 1965 that said how wonderful things were going in Dubuque with only 1.5% unemployment. Then I found an item from 1983, so 20 years later, where it said the Buke's plight is becoming desperate. So we had the highest unemployment rate in the country at 24%. We lost almost 10% of our population left because there were no jobs. And then I just want to use as an example, when I started here in 1993, January of 1993, the first thing I wanted to do when I walked into my office that first day was read the city's comprehensive plan, because that's your roadmap to the future. And I pulled it off the bookshelf and it was dated September 1936. So I kind of equate the 1980s, the bad things that happened to Dubuque. If you look at the, if you've ever seen the play or read the book Alice in Wonderland, when she comes to the fork in the road, she asks the Cheshire Cat, would you tell me please which way ought I go from here? The cat says that depends a good deal on where you want to get to. And Alice says, I don't much care where. And then the cat says, then it doesn't matter which way you go. And so that's the situation I would suggest Dubuque was in in the 1980s. They were at the mercy of everyone else because they had no plan. They didn't have a destination in mind. Now, in 1995, the city council had nothing to do with me. They'd already started the process before they hired me. They adopted a new comprehensive plan. They've updated that three times since then. And now they voted that this year they're going to do a new 20-year plan. So they started the process last year. We're involving thousands of citizens in a community engagement process to find out what the citizens want in their comprehensive plan for the next 20 years. And in August, the council will consider a new plan. Now, we talked about these five-year goals, so the very strong Dubuque economy. So if you look in the mid-1980s, we had 37,700 people working here. And today, we have almost 61,000. As a matter of fact, in November of 2016, we had 62,000 people working in Dubuque County. We've had a 61% increase in the number of people working here. We've been recognized by a lot of different organizations. Now, in this handout that I gave you, the first thing on the right side is a list of the recognitions and awards that we've received over the last few years. It'll give you some idea of some of the success we're having with some of the initiatives that we're implementing. And so I'm going to kind of go through, I won't go through each one of them on here because they're on that sheet that you have. You look at average hourly wage, so 2007 to 2016, it's about a 25%, an increase that exceeds inflation by 25% over that nine-year period. Our unemployment rate is less than the US unemployment rate. One of the things that happened after the city council adopted the comprehensive plan was it identified that we didn't have, excuse me, we didn't have anywhere for existing businesses to expand or new businesses to locate. So we tried to get private developers to build industrial parks. But because we're built into the rock bluffs overlooking the Mississippi River, it's very expensive to develop land here. So we were unsuccessful in that. So the mayor and city council ended up buying almost 1,500 acres of farmland and turning them into industrial parks. Now, we still have some of that land left to develop. But we have almost 6,500 people working in those industrial parks in 56 different businesses. Now, almost all those businesses are local businesses that needed a place to expand. So 47 of the 56, and the rest are new businesses to our area. One of the new businesses we got that's not in our industrial park, it's in our downtown, was IBM. They were looking for, they were going to make the first major investment in the United States in over 10 years. And they now have 600 employees in the Rochefort building downtown. So when they picked that building, it's the largest office building in the city of Dubuque, 300,000 square feet, nine stories tall. It was in a very dilapidated state. And the company that owned it was interested in moving out of it and moving to our industrial park in a new building. So a local not-for-profit bought the, so an NGO, bought the building. And they did a $47 million rehabilitation of the building. And then they lease, I think it's four of the floors to IBM. And then there's other companies that lease other floors. And they, the building was built in the 1930s. So it's on the National Register of Historic Places. And it's also now a LEED Platinum certified building. Here's some of the employers we have in Dubuque. John Deere, only they don't make farm equipment here. They make construction equipment like backhoes and bulldozers and skid steer loaders. McGraw-Hill, textbook company, their higher education division is here. I mentioned IBM, AY McDonald Manufacturing, Anderson Windows. They have about 700 employees here. McKesson is a Fortune 50 health care technology company. They have a division here. Bedline is a health product services company. Prudential Financial has about 500 employees here in their financial services division. Hormel Foods makes food products here. Honcamp Krueger, Cottingham and Butler. Honcamp Krueger is one of the top 50 accounting firms in the country. Cottingham and Butler is a health services company. Heartland Financial, they are a bank holding company. They own banks in 10 states. Nordstrom's, the clothing store, they have about a 700,000 square foot distribution facility here to stock their stores. Northeast Iowa Community College, Lawrence College, Clark University, and the University of Dubuque. And Flex Steel Industries that makes furniture. Last year, we were approached by an author who said he was commissioned to write a book about economic development. And he decided the two cities he was going to feature was Austin, Texas, the home of the University of Texas, and Dubuque Island. So we're in this book if you ever have a chance to read it. We want to be a sustainable city. So in 2005, after serving 10 years on the city council, Mayor Buell was elected mayor. And he asked the council to consider adopting sustainability as their number one priority. They agreed to do that. They then appointed a 40-member citizen commission and gave them a year to engage the community in a conversation about sustainability and come up with the definition for sustainability for Dubuque and create a viable, livable, and equitable community. We participate in what's called the STAR Community Rating System. So there's a national system where you can complete a review of everything that you do and how you do it. And then you get a point, it's a point system. And so the most you can get is five stars. We're a four-star community. It allows you to compare yourselves against other cities, how you compare with their sustainability initiatives. And also allows you to compare yourself with historic information because you reapply every four years. So it's constantly looking, how are you doing? How are you progressing? So I already mentioned, described about how we got here with sustainability. These are our 12 sustainability principles. These are the lens that we look at everything we do through this lens. One of the tangible benefits we've gotten from this is, I told you about IBM putting their 500 employees here. But in addition, IBM was looking for one city in North America to create a smarter city model for a smarter planet. And in 2009, they selected Dubuque. So we've been working with the IBM Watson Research Center in New York on pilot programs. So one of them was how do you conserve water? And the pilot program we did, the people that participated saved 7% water usage. Same thing with electricity. Discard management, which is recycling, increased recycling rates. Transportation services, we redesigned our transit system and increased our ridership by almost 40%. So the principle behind this smarter, sustainable Dubuque, this partnership with IBM, is to give people what they need, which is information and data, to do what they want. And people want to do one of two things. They either want to save money or they want to save the environment. And of course, some of them want to do both. But to do that, they need information. Because how do they know, what they need to do to conserve electricity and how they're doing unless they know how much electricity they're using now and what's using it, their refrigerator, their air conditioner?
Mike, this is kind of, and this is a little bit to your challenge, like what reson, what, with your boss and misinformation, like is there a more complete story like what we learned from smarter, sustainable Dubuque that he could connect to so that you could feel like you're doing more work, you know?
Excuse me?
Yes.
Does mean that if you already choose a smart city and now you aim to become a sustainable city?
I heard that and I didn't really get.
Ah, yeah. It's in 2009, Dubuque already become a smart city.
You became a smart city.
Smarter city.
Yeah, and now Dubuque tried to become a sustainable city, which is either a smart city.
Well, it's probably the same because to be a smarter city, you have to use data. And to become a sustainable city, you have to use data. But it's also a philosophy, a sustainable component, is what is your goal? And so we've established what our goals are through the smart, through sustainable Dubuque, where we created these 11 principles of action.
And then it allowed us to really be, so when IBM said, we're looking for a community, we could say, hey, we've already got a foundation here. And so it allowed us to have a successful, smarter, sustainable initiative with them.
Sir?
Yes.
Can we know the detailed concept of the sustainable city and the smart city? Because my city also just announced that our city is a smart city. But when I ask the, like, the government, what is the detailed concept of about the smart city? Nobody can answer.
Okay, well, the way I would answer that is you have to be a data-driven community.
Data-driven.
Sure, so you have to make your decisions based on data? So I'll try and give you an example. So let's talk about the idea of electricity. So you turn on your lights, on and off every day when you, you know, you have an old refrigerator, a new refrigerator, whatever you have that uses electricity. And every month, you get an electric bill. So how do you relate any of that? So it's kind of like going to the grocery store. So if every time you went to the grocery store, there were no prices on any of the products or anything, and you just walked down the aisle and you took what you wanted that day for your groceries. And then when you went through the checkout line, they didn't tell you how much it cost. They just tracked everything you used, and then you went home. And then at the end of the month, maybe you went to the grocery store 10 times and you get one bill for $300. You don't know if you bought the best-priced cereal or the best-priced milk. So you don't have any idea. If I want to spend less than $300, what do I do? You don't know. So to be a smarter city, you have to be data-driven. So where you start to learn what is your act, what are your actions causing, whether it's expenses or pollution, you have to know. If you want to impact your act, so if you want to lower your cost or you want to save the environment, you need to know what you need to do to do that. So what we try and do, so for instance, in water usage. So we run the water utility. We don't run the electric utility, that's a private utility. So it's harder for me to speak for them. But on the water utility, what you can do now, in the past, you used to just use water. Every month, you got a bill. Now you can actually go on the computer and you have your own dashboard. And it'll tell you, when did you use water? How much water are you using? So one of the things you might find out is you might find out you're using water while you're sleeping. What does that tell you? You have a leak. So you're wasting water. You're paying for it and you're wasting the water. But you didn't know it before until you looked at your dashboard and said, gee, between midnight and 6:00 a.m., I'm still using water. That doesn't make any sense.
And we're going to have a more in-depth presentation on smarter, sustainable Dubuque with Chris Coleman, who's our IT person. I mean, I don't want you to not ask my questions, but she'll get into really.
Okay, yes, I will be interested because. Well, I want to use a social, I want to use a social example too. So another thing we're doing, we have this initiative called Inclusive Dubuque. And it's not a city initiative, but we're part of it. And the community established this initiative around the idea of being an equitable community, fair for everybody. So the way they describe it to me is it's equal if everybody in this room gets a T-shirt. It's equitable if everybody gets a T-shirt that fits. So they've got about 60 network partners that participate in this concept, businesses, NGOs, individuals, government, in this concept of how do we make Dubuque an equitable community? And they call it inclusive Dubuque. Well, one of the things they did at the beginning was they took all kinds of different categories and they did a deep dive on data. And then they took all the data that they learned and they disaggregated the data by age, by race, by sex. Because, so for instance, in our schools, we're very proud of our schools. They're fantastic. And we have a lot of kids who are getting into the program that's for the high achievers. And so we brag about that. But you know what we found out? Is there's very few people of color in that program. If you never asked that question, you would never know that answer. Now that we know that answer, now we're trying to identify, how do we get kids into that program, kids of color into that program? Give you another example. We have a job training program where we take people that are unemployed or under, we have, you know, I told you about all the jobs we have now, 62,000 jobs compared to 37,000 jobs. So what's our biggest problem now? Workforce, we don't have enough workers. So we started a program about four years ago where we now find out from employers, okay, what specific skills do you need to do a very specific job that there's an opening right now? Then we go and we find unemployed and underemployed people. The community college creates a training program. They train those people. They then get those jobs. So they go from unemployed to a living wage job with health care and retirement benefits in a matter of three or four months. So we had over 300 people that went through that program. 97% of them ended up with a living wage job or they decided, you know what? I can succeed at getting an education I never thought I could. Now I learned that I can. And they go on to further their education so they can get even a better job. But what we found out through this whole process of disaggregating data, we didn't have any minorities in the program. So we hired a full-time employee that her only job is to find minority members to get into that program. Now, I think it's the next 100, so the first 300, now the next 100 to get to 400. I think almost 50% of them are minorities. And they have the exact same success rate. 97% of them are either going into the job or they're getting an education. But if we had never asked that question, done the data dive, been a smart city, we'd never know the problem existed. And then, of course, how do you solve the problem that you don't know exists?
How to address this problem?
So for me, a smarter city is about data. It's having information, but you got to go out, you have to go out and find it. You have to get it, you have to want it. You have to create mechanisms to track it and collect it. That's a smarter city.
Yeah, I'm interested in city and Dubuque initiatives. Is it like public-private partnerships and how does it work? What are the mechanisms? City and Dubuque initiatives.
Oh, Dubuque initiatives?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so Dubuque initiatives, yes. So it's an NGO. And so they're the ones that did the Rochefort building for IBM, Dubuque initiatives. They actually built our first industrial park too, before the city took over the industrial parks. And they did the Rochefort building. And it's an NGO. And on the board of directors is the mayor, the city manager, two city council members, and then seven other citizens. And their mission is to help with downtown redevelopment. And so they get grants or they, as I said, they owned an industrial park one time. So they made money off their industrial park. They invest their money, things like that. They renovated the Rochefort building, that $47 million project, they did that. That's one of the city community partners that's an NGO. So I mentioned to you, Mayor Buell was on the city council for 10 years before he was elected mayor in 2005. Now, in 2010, it was Connected World Magazine named the Top 10 Entrepreneurs in 2010. And Jeff Bezos, who, what is he, Amazon, right? Jeff Bezos, Amazon.com? He was on the list of the top 10 entrepreneurs, innovators, top 10 innovators, I'm sorry, in the country. Roy Buell was on the list of the top 10 innovators in the country. One of our big projects is the historic Millwork District revitalization. And there's some information in there for you, and I'm sure you'll see it while you're here. But we're the oldest city in the state of Iowa. So City Hall, this building you were in, was built before the Civil War. So it was built in 1858. And so this area of our community was the original manufacturing district. And in those days, buildings were, manufacturing buildings were three, four, five-story brick buildings. Not like today where they're giant one-story buildings. And so a long time ago, these buildings were abandoned because they were very inefficient to use. And so we partnered with four developers. And the private developers are buying these buildings. We're helping with financing. And then they're renovating them into apartments and commercial spaces like shops and restaurants. So there'll be over 700 living units here, tens of thousands of square feet of shops and restaurants. We're the ones building the parking lots so they have places to park their cars. We rebuilt all the roads. We rebuilt all the infrastructure like sewer and water. Of course, it was very old and decrepit. We built the new intermodal transportation center so where all our buses go into that district. And there's a parking ramp there for people that want to use the buses to park. We received a national award for that. We also just built a new sewer plant. We call it our Water and Resource Recovery Center for $70 million. So we switched from incinerating our sewer waste, which was not environmentally friendly and wasn't very efficient, it was very expensive, to now we use anaerobic digestion. So it's a natural process where bugs eat the waste. And the nice thing is, a byproduct of that is methane gas. So we burn the methane gas to run electrical turbines. That saves us $350,000 a year on our electrical costs. Plus, we just entered a company, a private company, a partnership with a private company that's going to come in and take, we even have more methane than we need to use the electricity. And they're going to turn it into bio CNG. So they're going to turn it into natural gas. So then we can burn it in our vehicles.
Sorry, sir.
Yeah?
About the building in United States, especially Dubuque, is there any regulation? You can break down all the building and then rebuild it or?
Depends. So we have six historic preservation districts in our town. So in those districts, no, you just can't tear a building down or do whatever you want with it. You have to go in front of the Historic Preservation Commission, and they have to approve what you're doing to your building.
There is a commission to approve that.
Yeah, but it doesn't cover our whole town. It just covers the older parts of our community, historic preservation areas.
Yeah, because, you know, in my, now in my city, I thought it is a very historical building, but new mayor just break down the building. For me, it's so sad.
Well, that's what happened here in the 1960s. So they tore a lot of the old buildings down. And that's what caused the reaction to form the Historic Preservation Commission. And now make, you have to get approval to do those things? Because we were doing the same thing that you're talking about. And they didn't, people didn't want that to happen.
Yeah. Even for me, I felt so sad because there is so much history in the building. But now it's.
Yeah, we're big believers in historic preservation.
Yeah. So there is also regulation. So this is for housing and this is for education center for.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a zoning plan. So industry has to be one place and commercial has to be another place and residential another place, yes.
So Laura can talk to you about both of those because she, you're meeting on Wednesday. Planning manages the Historic Preservation Commission that sees those requests as well as zoning and development.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. And then there's the oldest part of our town where the most economically challenged residents live. We have a real bad flooding problem, not from the Mississippi River, but from the tributary that goes into the Mississippi River. And so we've had six presidential disaster declarations related to flooding since 1999, where the flooding was so bad the President of the United States gave us assistance to clean things up. And so the mayor and council adopted this $219 million V-branch watershed flood mitigation project that you're going to learn a lot about while you're here, I'm sure. But what happened was, I'm sorry.
Also, erosion and slides coming here?
No, not slides, no. We have rock. So what happened was, 100 years ago, there was a creek that ran through the north end of our town. And they buried it underground in a big culvert. So a big limestone culvert where the creek would be underground. And then they could build on top of the ground. But the problem is, a long time ago, the underground culvert lost the capacity for all the water that comes down to it. So that's why all the flooding would happen because this culvert would fill up and then the water would just stay on top. So what we're doing.